Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Good evening, and my name is Gavin McCullough. I live at five Flax Pond Road in the area of Lynn. I ride the T. And I don't know if I'm the only one here in the room that's confused, but you know, every time I listen to the budget issues in relationship to public transportation, I've heard just tonight alone anywhere from an eight million dollar deficit to a million or a billion dollar operational deficit to a four-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar operational deficit. I'm confused. And I think that part of that confusion lies in the fact that, I don't know how this happened, and maybe somebody can help educate me, but the public transportation got saddled with the debt from the Big D. And so when all of us who are riders come here and say, "Hey, don't cut the service," but then we hear an eight-billion-dollar deficit, it really kind of, it's confusing and it's intimidating. And I really think that the debt in relationship to the Big D, the Big D, needs to be separated out of the conversation when we're talking about potential for more services. Because I certainly don't want to ask for another lawsuit when we're talking about an eight-billion-dollar deficit. So I think that that would be helpful in the conversation when we're talking to the public, that we have a better understanding of, you know, what it costs to run the buses and the trains, to pay the workers, and to understand that in context to that budget as opposed to talking about the larger budget. Now, thank you first of all for all coming here. And I know that a lot of what you're hearing is, you know, "This is what we need, this is what we want, can we spend more?" But I haven't really heard anyone come here and say, "Hey, I've got an idea, how about, how about raise your revenue for MassDOT?" You know, one of the things that the community I used to live in in Salem was having a very difficult time with was placing wind turbines in their community. And you know, when you talk about the train tracks or the subway tracks, you know, that is public property or owned by the T. One of the suggestions I'll make is that maybe there is an opportunity there for a quick placement of wind turbines and for the communities that host these wind turbines on the train track properties that not only do they get a discount on their electric bill by buying electricity from those wind turbines located in their communities, but if I'm a train rider and I'm buying electricity from my local wind turbine located in my community, I also get a discount on my train rides as well. That's just a simple suggestion. I don't know if it has viability, but I'm assuming that, you know, you have land there and there is an opportunity for companies who want to place these power stations on that property. The other, the only other thing that I want to suggest is that I really feel now that I'm living in Lynn that there's a real opportunity here with the casino potential soccer stadium. And it sounds like that there is going to be an awful lot of thinking about how to make all of that work. But I think that, and hopefully the communities in Lynn, in Revere, will see this as an opportunity to draw new business within our community, whether it be hosting hotels and the other businesses that go along in providing services for that community and that business. So, thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sheldon Pascoe, and I live in the Highlands of Lynn. I use the T a little bit, not a lot. I would use it a lot more if I had a Blue Line. The other day, I woke up, was having my coffee and reading the local newspaper, and I saw a piece in the paper about MassDOT being here. And I thought, "Well, maybe I can step up and talk to some big guys." Thank you very much for coming here, that's one of the things I want to say. But the most important thing that I have seen now, been here about 12 years now, the Blue Line to Lynn would be huge. I thought I was going to give you guys a good idea. Everybody's talking about the same thing, and they've been talking about it for a long time. I think it would be very helpful for our businesses, as I've already stated, but I didn't hear too much about the less fortunate people living in Lynn would have a much better opportunity to find work in Boston if they had affordable transportation. I think it'd be wonderful for our old city, and I think it'd be a pleasure in New York if you give it to us. Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Susan Pascoe, Highlands Coalition. I live in, right down the street from the Ford School. Wanted to say that I'm here to speak for myself and for those that are here. I'm looking at Capone and I'm on a spinal cord injuries and other medical problems. And I think it is necessary. It's been 50 years since I've been going about this with my medical care. And that was one drag, one schlep to get there. We use a car because I can't really like sit on a train, not the purple line anymore. Do a lot of changes. There are things that are impending such as not enough elevators and not enough access for me to climb stairs, or people move fast to my lane and are in escalators. We've lived in Howell, Great Barrington, Milton, and Holden, and Winterford for 30 years, and many towns not nearly the size of Lynn. Lynn is an active, viable, viable city with 30,000 people. People who have worked in Boston, they go to necessary medical care that they can't get possibly even one of them are sure in this city. So I'm begging you to bring the Blue Line to Lynn because the people of Lynn deserve it. They've been waiting a long time, 100 years is too long, 25 years is too long. And we're here 13 years to settle our, and I've been, I'm saying it, I'm waiting for the Blue Line to come here. I say that Lynn deserves it and needs it to keep it viable and to connect it to the rest of the state of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number thirty-two. Number thirty-three.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Gary Bear, and I am Executive Director of the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development, a regional economic development organization recognized by the Commonwealth. We represent 30 communities stretching from Winterford and Revere in Chalkus to the south, in Newburyport and Ainsbury in the north, Cape N, up the coast to Cape N and Gloucester. And as far west is Boxbury and Middleton and Winfield. In essence, from our perspective, the often quoted principle of economic development is economic development, jobs, follow transportation improvements. The North Shore Alliance several years ago did a study and through a subcommittee identified several projects on transportation that still sit in a state of non-completions. Among those projects include the Route One Transportation Improvement Plan that you've already heard from Mayor Rizzo, Exit Nineteen at Brimble Ave. in Beverly that Mayor Scanlon is involved with as an illustration of what that means or potentially means to the Commonwealth and the region with the potential for an additional 7,500 jobs that would be created if that transportation development took place. There are 75 to 80 acres of undeveloped land would be opened up for development in over, estimates of 1.8 to 3.8 million dollars of business and residential development opportunities exist in that area. Other projects on that list include the Route 128 corridor study, the ferry projects in Salem and Lynn that you've already heard about, and improvements and enhancements to the commuter rail transportation. Our business sectors, healthcare, manufacturing, tourism, rely upon that transportation, commuter rail transportation. And it supports thousands of jobs within the region. It's important that we recognize also the individual projects that the communities in this region represent, have, and would be neglectful if we didn't mention those. We also want to make mention of the fact that these deficiencies or gaps in our transportation budget are further impacted perhaps by the projected development of possible casinos itself at times. Though the additional traffic will stress and harden over burden system, we ask that you contemplate these as you move forward. The North Shore Alliance stays, stands prepared to be engaged as a partner in this discussion. It's an important message that the Commonwealth as a whole understands that this is a Commonwealth problem. The problem that people have, that raises the question of revenues is because that's the 800 Commonwealth in the room. We want to be engaged in the unknown discussions about the needs, but the transportation revenue needs have to be addressed by the legislature, DOT. And I suggest, and the Alliance suggests, that a frank and open discussion with the Commonwealth and its citizens needs to occur. We stand prepared to be an ally in that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirty-four, thirty-five.
My name is Rick Potowski. I'm a transit advocate, former member of the MBTA Advisory Board as a representative from Harvard at Mass. I'm glad I'm following the prior speaker. What I want to take my time in talking about is the people that the undertown gorilla, I'm calling it the elephant in the room, and that's the financing. It's nice that we're all talking about needed improvements, but you guys don't have the money to do your recurrent operations. Elephant is the financing. And of course, you need a reality check. The reality check is, the state has a deficit. They're not going to give you a whole lot more. The federal government has a deficit. In fact, we're falling off a financial cliff or curb, or whatever you want to call it. And my point that I want to make tonight is that the T has to change its business operational plan. It cannot continue as in the past, looking for revenue from the state, looking for more revenue from the state. We were very lucky regarding the Blue Line to get earmarks from tyranny and Senator Kerry putting in earmarks. Those earmarks are gone, there are no more earmarks. We don't have 50% of the funding for the Blue Line. So I want to go over two things that are being done currently that can be replicated, that it doesn't look like anyone at the T is even thinking about. One of the distinguished speakers in the very beginning talked about the privatization and public partnerships in Texas and in Colorado. But there's a lot more that can be done. I want to talk briefly about what Hong Kong has done back in the 70s when they didn't have a subway system. They started an agency, just like the MBTA, to build, operate, maintain a rail system. But what they did differently as they started running into trying to get income to support that is they privatized that entity. They formed a corporation to run the rail system in Hong Kong. And how they got the revenue for that is they issued an IPO for 30% of the stock for that corporation. That corporation, unlike a lot of public entities such as the MBTA, could not buy real estate that wasn't used for transit. What they did is they got that entity to buy land next to the transit stations and proposed transit stations, and then they generated income from developments on that. So far, they have statistics. They now run 75,000 apartments on land next to subway stations where there is absolutely no provision for cars at all at any of these facilities. They either enter into development agreement with other developments or they ground lease the property, and they do have the right to ground lease, airright lease over any of the property. This corporation is doing so well that in the last 10 years, its stock, publicly traded stock, both in the Hong Kong Exchange and American depositary receipts in the New York Exchange, has, its income has gone up three times, or its stock price has gone up three times what the S and P index has gone up. That's how profitable this can be. By the way, they now run the rail, they build the extensions, they are lowering, I'm going to say that again, they're lowering fares, and they're not getting any money from the government of Hong Kong. Now, this organization called MTR Inc. now also operates commuter rail systems in all London. London overground, they operate the whole system. Melbourne, in Scandinavia, by the way, in Scandinavia, they outbid or got the contract, the operating contract from, over the company that was supposed to be the partner with Mass, the commuter rail viola, I believe it is. They outbid, they better bid than no. And the important thing about their operation is it operates 99% on time. The current rail operation for here, I just saw posted in the, posted in the North Station is like 74% on time performance for the Rockport line. So the other thing I want to talk about, and I have this written, I'll give it to you, but also is replicating, again, generating income, replicating the Caltrain baby bullet service in which they did a skip-stop service, and I had comparable schedules between what they're doing between San Diego and San Francisco. And I picked Worcester as the comparable because the lines just happen to be the same length. And just like the Worcester line runs now, it's an hour and a half to get into Boston. It was an hour and a half to get from San Jose to San Francisco. And what they did is they put in skip-stop service for express trains. And now in order to have that happen, they had to build passing tracks, two sets of passing tracks. You can do the same thing on the Worcester line. Now, what was the impact? The impact was, this was finished in 2004, the impact was that since then, ridership has increased about 70%. And more importantly, income has increased over 100%. They actually jacked the fares up and got more riders. Another thing they did to that service is they added bike cars to all the trains so people could put their bicycles in it. Right now, you have bike cars in the trains in the summer going up to Rockport, but I don't know where they are during rush hour. There's a lot of people who would like to take their bikes on the train, but can't. So why don't you put those in the train, maybe you'll attract more riders. And that's it, I'm going to leave this stuff with you guys.
Thank you. Number thirty-six, number thirty-seven.
Hello, my name is Antoinette, and I live in Lynn, but I love it. And I've worked at a central hospital for 10 years. I'm not a person of big business or a person in a suit, but I will tell you that I ride the T every day to go to work, and it's terrible. The 442, the 441 is terrible. It takes a half hour for a bus to come by. The 455, I don't know where that bus is at, because it comes every hour. That bus is terrible. To wondering, you need something more. Like when I started flying yesterday for the Blue Line to come to Lynn, I was like, "Thank God, a sky out of heaven just dropped this paper here, because it's perfect." For people who have to work in Boston, it's hard to get there off of public transportation, taking the T here. It's crazy. Like, I want this so bad to happen. I know that, you know, talking about it happening 100 years ago, but it's the time now. Businesses are struggling because of this, it seems, and the environment is struggling over this because carbonation and all that other stuff is crazy. So I would like for the Blue Line to reach Lynn, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Kleiner. I'm a selector in the town of Salisbury, and also a member of Coastal Trail Coalition, which is trying to build a network of trails with much help from MassDOT and the MBTA. Financing. The gas tax, obviously, has been stalled at a number for a long time. Inflation's gone up, gas consumption is down. Whatever you do, you have to be able to make the case, and I think the public would understand it, that that has to be part of the solution for data financing. We've missed, you know, years of, with the shrinking value of the dollar, of the value of the gas tax. They haven't been fully encouraged to do anything about it. But meantime, bridges and highways are deteriorating. You're not getting projects done, the MBTA is in trouble. The public would accept that if you make the case. Adjust it to what it was, you know, adjust it for inflation, and then end it. And then you won't have this problem of having to be hard about it as inflation goes on. Other subjects, biking. That's something you're doing a good job on, beginning to think about and incorporate it into your planning. Biking is the best thing to take. One thing I think you need to continue to do is to take leadership in getting the cities and towns to make accommodations that will fit with transit, fit with bike trails, things like that, that will keep people safe and let people use it. Recently, two of the trains in Boston don't do it often due to tire. There were 25 bikes in Newburyport, 250 in Salem. If there were good connections to those things, it'd be even more. And everybody who has a bike and just places a car, is saving at least $5,000 a year, and you're getting a passenger. So try to think broadly and lead with seminars, education, things like that to help everyone else come along. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Mulriver, Office of Economic Community Development in Lynn. Thank you again, Secretary Davy and MassDOT for coming out to the cities and towns. I think this is valuable, and I appreciate your effort. I just want to flesh out quickly a couple of the things mentioned in the mayor's letter. The issue of Copland Circle and the project on Route One, as it's already on the tip, we felt that it would be a great consideration to look at the possibility of extending the spur to Route 107 to bring that traffic directly down into Lynn. And that may also reduce the traffic going north on Route One and keep a lot of traffic off the residential streets. The Blue Line, we've heard a lot about tonight. We know it isn't in the near future, but we would ask you to look at some of the planning issues that are necessary to get that viable in the future. How is the Blue Line going to connect with the existing Blue Line and all? If there are parcels that need to be acquired now rather than developed, we would ask you to consider that, look into that for the future. We appreciate it. The ferry and one of the speakers earlier mentioned the Boston Harbor Islands. This would be a direct route from Lynn for tourists out to those islands, which we think would be beneficial. And finally, in my last 20 seconds, there's also a spur that could come off of Route One heading south that the Chuck Handle lights bring it directly into Copland Circle, which would again keep a lot of traffic off the residential streets in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Number forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five. Oh, I didn't think I gave out forty-four, I'm sorry. Forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six.
Good evening, my name is Sirphina Rosa. I'm from Sayaflyn, from University of Chelsea. I've been a former MBTA for three years, for 32 years, and I've been advocating for motorization for the North Shore for the longest time. As a former delegate for the union, I work very closely with a former manager, and I believe that the Blue Line in Lynn has been talking for so long that, you know, it's really, excuse my language, it's pathetic. Because what happened, the city of Boston on the west side, on the south side, and to be specific, when I first started, some people have a lot of trouble, and they have biggest problem to even develop what they have developed. And I believe that the North Shore is long overdue. And I think, you know, the time has come for the North Shore to be taking care of motorization. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Susan McGuire, and I live in Nahant, and I teach at North Shore Community College. And I'm affiliated with Nahant Bay Peace and Justice. So I'd like to ask you to consider one don't and one do. The don't is don't privatize our system of public transportation as was suggested by, I think, three people tonight. And the do is to please seriously consider raising the gas tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lissy Romano. I'm an organizer with Neighbor to Neighbor grassroots organization statewide that builds power in low-income communities so that we can have a voice in the political decisions that affect us. I'm here because I feel very proud to live in such a progressive state, and I feel very proud to have this conversation with you. And I know that you wouldn't be in these jobs if you didn't know the unquestionable good of public transportation. So I don't have to educate you about how important this public transportation is for the low-income communities and communities of color here in Lynn. You know that a lot of the people can't get jobs here in Lynn because they're not here, and they're not going to be able to bring any money home to their families without public transportation. We have a lot of health care, you know, all these big issues you hear about like health, I mean, obesity, and clean air and dirty air are big problems in our communities as well. In order to create more economic opportunity, we need people to be able to actually get to schools. And in order for people to actually show up at hearings like this and make their voices heard, they also need public transportation. So what we want to, what we want to propose is that you stand with us when we ask the legislature to pass an act to invest in our communities, which will raise 1.37 billion dollars by restoring the income tax rate to 5.95%, while increasing the personal exemption to hold down increases for low and middle-income families. We also want to raise the tax rate on investment income to 8.95% with an exemption for low and middle-income seniors. So we will stand with you when you ask for these funds, and we hope that you'll stand with us and really work hard to make, to show everybody that this transportation issue is a civil rights issue, and that's what they, that's what they're really in this to win. Thank you.
My name is Patrick Reenan. I'm a long-time Long Island resident. My job, if I was around, is to do station design. I'm for TSA, Transit Station Security Administration. At the airport, I'm one of the thousand TSA employees, and there's over a couple dozen plus TSA employees in Lynn. It's hard against the airport. I currently park at Chelsea across from the airport because there's no one-site parking unless I pay $27 a day. I used to take the Blue Line, but through the, through the construction of the garage there caused delays, so I had to switch to parking at Chelsea. I used to take, and that's only just recently because the bridge was out of commission for six months while they built the replacement bridge. So I strongly support the Blue Line coming to Lynn. I know it's been around for a long time. I know that the C and M library at Park Plaza, the MassDOT headquarters, they're applying instruction back in 1970, like very detailed outlines of how, how, how the Blue Line would come to Lynn. I mean, they even had station, what proposed station designs and what the platform could look like. So I, again, I strongly suggest the Blue Line come to Lynn, and I strongly support the ferry. And if the ferry does come to Lynn, I strongly, strongly recommend that it have a stop at Logan Airport because it would help people greatly, Lynn, would help the economy And I thank you, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Number fifty?
Hi, my name is Mark Shannon. I'm an engineer living in Stone, Massachusetts. I do appreciate you staying a little bit late here tonight to, to listen to all of us. So you've heard from several people tonight who've identified the highway rail and even some of the water transportation needs, and these needs are substantial, and I think we all recognize. And it's not just congestion, and it's not just capacity, and it's not just extensions, but there's also a lot of, you know, safety improvements that need to be made, need to be made throughout the highway system. We know that the T is constantly robbing Peter to pay for Paul, and includes taking parts from one machine to another, and there are an awful lot of needs, I think we all recognize that. So recognizing the needs, I've come to speak in favor of actions that would enhance the revenues needed to build, operate, maintain, and keep a legacy system for, for our children and grandchildren. I am as spending diverse as anybody else, a lot of the way to save two cents on gasoline, but I recognize the need to raise the gas tax. I recognize that there may just be a short-term solution as the gas and vehicles are becoming more efficient. We may need to look at the VNT tax, the VNT fees that people want to travel. We may need to be looking at tolls, certain types of fare increases, and value capture, things that people have spoken about here tonight, utilizing some of Mastox and MBTA's unutilized, unused real estate to generate revenues in, in ways that are being generated right now. So I favor all of that. I do think this is a legacy issue for all of us as adults, those who have children and don't have grandchildren, great-grandchildren. We want to leave a system for them that was left for us, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fifty-one? Fifty-two? Fifty-three? 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 And I believe fifty-three is my last number, so if you have a number after fifty-three, please raise your hand, and I will make sure you get called up.
Now I have pressure, I'm a lot of speaker, I'm going to try to go fast. I was actually not going to originally speak, but I really was very inspired by everyone that talked before me, and it was very thought-provoking, so thank you to everyone that did talk, and really, I very appreciate the time. My name is Achira Ruda. I'm a student that attends classes at a North Shore Community College on the Danvers campus, and I also work doing security in various buildings in the Boston area. I have a car. I'm unable to drive to Boston most of the time because of the parking, especially on weekdays, it's just, it's crazy. And due to that lack of parking, I need to depend on the commuter rail, and the nearest commuter rail to me is in Beverly. I could go on for quite a bit about the fares, but I'll just stick to what I have here. I can't park there, and so when I need to take the commuter rail, I need to rent my bike there, and it becomes extremely problematic, because when you arrive at the T, I know there are guidelines, and I understand why they may be put in place for biking, but some lines I can't even take it on, and I know there are time constraints, I forget the exact time constraint, because it's always different, I work different hours, so I've been late to work more times than I care to recall. Let's see. Another thing I want to bring up is, there was a period of time that I was actually without a car while attending classes at North Shore Community College, and it was very, very difficult to get there, because as far as I know, there is no direct way from Danvers to Danvers, to the commuter rail. So it would be really, really great if there was a way to do that just to Danvers to Danvers to, to North Shore Community College, because I didn't have a car, I didn't have dependable people that could give me lessons. And one last thing is, there are actually, I believe, at least twelve North Shore Community Colleges that work here that were really, really here to speak, but are actually unable to because of the time that public transportation stops running, which is another huge issue for me too with work, because sometimes I have to work until midnight, and sometimes till three in the morning. So just, it's very, very difficult. Thank you for listening again, and I am really, really grateful for the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have a number who would like to speak. If you see none, I would like to, we have Secretary Davy and the whole Massa team, thank everyone for coming. I would like to give you an email address, where if you want to send comments that you didn't speak, or additional comments, or have your friends send comments, or your family, or your coworkers, or your fellow students. That email address is yourvisionourfuture, that's one word, at dot state dot ma dot us. And please, 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 get the word out, send us all your comments, we would love to hear them. One more thing, we are having one final meeting tomorrow. It is the last of the Our Vision, Your Future, or Your Vision, Our Future meetings, and it will be in Attleboro City Hall tomorrow from six o'clock to eight p.m. And again, thank you all very much for coming, your voice is great.